I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of flag, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, justiciable.
Okay, welcome everyone to the August 21st meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes of August 7th. We have a motion and a second and a discussion on the minutes. Hearing now, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to approve the financial important payment bills?
Summued.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Now, I'm on the last page here of preview. Just give me just a few seconds here on this. Steve, I did have one question. Chesapeake employers insurance.
Yeah, more workers compensation.
So that's paid? One-time payment.
One-time payment, which may be increased when they do the audit for the year end if that not November or October 1st through September 30th this whole year. They do an audit in one five years, you know, is that more to that or actually use a credit?
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing now, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, proclamation. P-14, 2019, Cecil Bank's 60th birthday. We've got President Spiro in there. Come on down, Terry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Come on down and we have a proclamation for you. I'd like to read for Cecil Bank. If I could, if I could come down.
Thank you.
I'm doing fantastic. Lou, are you gonna read it?
Certainly can.
Lou will read it and I take great pride in reading it.
A proclamation, the mayor commissioned the town of Elk and recognizing Cecil Bank for 60 years of service in Elk. Whereas Cecil Bank commenced operations on August 3rd, 1959, as a Cecil Federal Savings and Loan Association at 125 North Creek, where its main office remains today. Whereas Cecil Bank grew from its original capital of $250,000 to the current assets of over $190 million. And whereas Cecil Bank operates seven locations with 50 employees. And whereas Cecil Bank, as their last remaining community bank headquartered in northeastern Maryland, is recognized as a vital member of Elk's business community. Now therefore being known that on behalf of the mayor commissioners, along with the citizens of the Elk community in recognition of 60 years of service to the Elk community, we hereby warmly extend our sincerest congratulations to Cecil Bank.
Get everyone in the background. I'll get here right next to you.
Can I put my arm around you?
Of course.
Thank you. Would you indulge me with just a couple of comments?
No, I'd love for it.
Thank you.
Would you like to sit down or stand up?
No, I've been sitting all day.
All right, perfect.
I'll just stand back here so I can sort of face everybody sort of kind of. I want to thank you for this proclamation, Mr. Mayor and commissioners and those of you in the audience for your applause a few moments ago. I just wanted to say a few things. I'm Terry Spiro, the president and CEO of Cecil. And on behalf of our shareholders and our board of directors and our employees, we're just delighted to accept this proclamation. I think many of you know that 60 years of service for any business is quite a marker. And I think for those of you who know that we've had some difficulty and troubles the last several years that we've had to work out of, we're probably older than 60 years because I think they've probably been dog years, not regular years. But it really has been a team effort. We're delighted to be 60 years old and still functioning and supporting Cecil and contributing to this marketplace and to this county. And so in recognition of our anniversary, we wanted to also recognize two organizations. And there are many, but we've chosen two tonight to recognize and also to provide a donation because they do excellent work in the marketplace and in the community. And just like a community bank, they're very much invested in Cecil. And we have a donation I'd like for them to come forward as I announce their names. But we have invited Derek DeWitt, the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club, and John Ness from the West Cecil Health Center to receive their donations and to thank them on behalf of Cecil for all their good work here in the marketplace and the community. Derek, thank you so much. There you go. John?
Let me get a picture of you four together.
All right. So would you like it same place?
Yeah, get to same place. Watch your step there. I'll be the photo camera.
John and I will be on the island and we'll be the couple or something like that.
All right, he might want to smile behind him. Okay, big smile. Perfect, perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate it very much.
Very nice. Okay, we have the Cecil, Lou, are you on Cecil County Guards, can I see you?
Can I present?
No one from the Cecil County, so let's put that on the back burner. Town administration report.
The item I have is Resolution R-11, 2019, disposal surplus property. This resolution shall declare certain property of the town of Elk and add surplus and authorize the disposal of that property. Whereas the charter of the town of Elk in Article 13, P-13-1 provides for the disposal of any real personal property of the town of Elk and has been declared surplus by resolution of the board. Whereas the following town-owned equipment has exceeded its respective service life due to age, mileage, and/or general condition recommended for disposal of surplus property. The three items that we'll sell are a 2002 International 4900, Model 4900 dump truck, 2003 Ford F-150, and a 2006 F-250. These vehicles will be sold to Ritchie Brothers. They're our best source of income for the disposal of surplus vehicles of the board who will authorize this resolution.
We have a motion to approve Resolution R-11-2019.
Summued.
A motion?
Second.
And a second and a discussion on that. I saw our, we did very well with Ritchie Brothers during the last disposal.
We usually do pretty good because of a lot of bidders.
Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I have a quick report. I'm actually looking over the Elk and Parks and Rec minutes, but something that I knew was on my mind to bring up to the board. The Cecil County school system took a tour of our cross-country track. I'd say probably two months ago, and they've decided that the track is in pretty good shape to host a all-county high school meet right here in downtown Elk. So that's going to be on October 15th, I believe. It'll be held on Tuesday, October 15th. So we probably will be working, I think Mary will be working with Matt Roberts, I think, to get everything together, and our team will help in any way that we can. But I think this is exactly what we wanted to see. Be great to have all the, if anyone's never been to a cross-country race or the kids never, if you've never seen it. Of course, I was a thoroughbred horse owner for many years. When my son took up running cross-country, I found myself running alongside of him as I were going. So you try to find strategic spots to watch the race, but it's very, very exciting and it brings in a lot of families. Most of your cross-country teams could be 20, 30 students, and then you've got their parents coming. So it'll be a pretty decent crowd here in County Elk, and hopefully it'll stay, and we can entertain them with our businesses downtown. Come on Tuesday night would be wonderful.
Mary, you got a time for that?
I would say that if it's Tuesday, it would be after school. It would probably be at a 3:30 event.
3:30, 3 o'clock, 3:30.
3 o'clock, 3:30.
Exactly where is that?
It would be at Meadow Park. I think they're going to be running the same that we did the Lucky Charm Race. So they'd be running across Delaware Avenue, back by the Hatchery Ponds, swinging up and around and coming back through. Pretty excited about that. At the last meeting, Mr. Giblin had given, he had given certainly a proclamation and appreciation to his favorite mayor, and I just wanted to bring, maybe I might want to read that one more time for everybody that wasn't here, but I'll pass on reading it again. But Mr. Giblin had some questions and some ideals for the council, and I just wanted to give him a quick rundown. He listed about six items and he talked a little bit about a mini park, maybe putting some seating down by the Bridge Street Bridge. That's still under advisement. The annual barbecue bash, I love the idea. We had, and I didn't, I just wanted to let you know that over the last couple of years, I've reached out to Kansas City Barbecue Company, and we were asking to see if we could host the Maryland State Championship here for the barbecue. Bel Air hosts, that event that you were saying is actually the Maryland State Championship in Bel Air, where they have all the barbecue folks. So I would love to see that happen, and we might put that in the hands of our Parks and Rec Department, pull that one off for us. The quarterly newsletter you were talking about, we're using social media the best that we can now. We've been trying to get away and be a little bit more green. You wouldn't be able to tell it with all the paperwork we have up here, but it's a good idea. Maybe we can include, not necessarily a quarterly newsletter, but maybe we can do a bi-yearly newsletter in with our community guide. Maybe we can create that letter that's in it. We do put the community guide out twice a year, and maybe we can make some type of formal, a little more formal letter from the board. You mentioned about a flea market. The folks at Brookbend are hosting a, I don't know if you want to necessarily call it a flea market, but the second Saturday of each month, behind Brookbend on Howard Street, they are hosting venues. And I'm not sure if you were aware of that or not, but it's the second Saturday of every month on Howard Street, exactly where you were thinking about it. And there has been vendors. They had an ice cream vendor there, they had a meat and cheese vendor, they have many flea market-type items, but it's a very nice event and it's growing. I think the first event they had, they had maybe five vendors, and I think the last one, they had like seven or eight vendors. So it's grown and could become a nice thing. You also mentioned about the fire company carnivals. This has been discussed. The J.C.'s used to, before you came into town, the Elk and J.C.'s then turned into the Cecil County J.C.'s. That was the biggest fundraiser of the year. In fact, John was probably participate in many of those J.C. carnivals. And the J.C. carnivals, we always felt, and I participated in many of them, and I feel the same way you do. Why aren't we having one? Because I think it brings to a part of togetherness. I reached out last year to the Elk and FOP to see if they wanted to have one. I think it would be, I reached out to the Elk and Alliance to host one, and sometimes we've got so many things going on, but I think that that's something that maybe I'm going to put a little more pressure on our Parks and Rec Board, but might be a nice fundraiser for the Parks and Rec Department to help kick off our new community center with some type of carnival in the spring. Your last one was a railroad trip, and I don't know where to go with that one, so I'll report back to you on that one. So the, that is all that I have as far as what I need to report. Jean?
Yeah, I did want to talk about our community guide because there was discussion on whether or not we were going to do a bi-yearly or change it. Has there been a decision on that? Are we just keeping it the way it was?
I think the Parks and Rec Board has already sent out a separate Parks and Rec.
Is that the printer?
It's at the printer.
So, okay.
So we'll have a yearly, we'll have a yearly community guide as it stands right now, but we will be able to, we could include a latter.
I like, I think we should only have it once a year to be honest with you, because it just becomes, you know, kind of redundant that repetitiveness of it. And if you could just do your newsletter for your activities, I think that would be really great. But in the next one, I'm not sure when you're coming out with it, like going into January or?
February.
February. So then we could definitely make sure there's some sort that we touch base on the new community center with as much detail as we possibly can give them at that time. I'd like to see that. I wanted to congratulate, just say thank you to DPW. I know you've been so busy since that storm has come through. Yeah, it's amazing. It's just amazing. And that picture I sent, as I took a tour, I was seeing more and more residents that really took the time to hopefully make their life better. I wish I could say thank you to all those people, but it just, it just made me feel very good about how our town residents really care about our town. To go the extra mile to put those twigs, lens, brush, whatever it was, out and, you know, show a lot of respect for our town and.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I know, I'm sure you guys do, and I just wanted to let you know that we all appreciate the work you're doing from that storm. Thank you. Go ahead.
Charles?
Dan, I echo Jean's sentiment about the storm as well, so she's done a good job in referencing that. Dan, don't forget about the barricades that Wright's church is named for, okay? And lastly, I see that Elk Parks and Recreation Advisory Board passed out some information we just got. I'll read it later, but there is one significant matter in there that my eyes focus on quickly, that's the golf classes, senior classes, and fitness classes. I know right now the Health Department and Department of Community Services do a lot of these things, and they do a lot of these things in churches that have fellowship hall and other buildings around Cecil County. They might be a great source to reach out to because it could be something done during the day, there's no cards for that, and it can just alleviate you from doing a lot of things. I know at my church they have a, they just included a fitness class, and they had people in there from 80 to, it was 55 plus, but they had 21 people. Fortunately for us, we had space, but also it could be an advantage to you as well. Even the ideas I think is that. Thank you much.
Charles? I mean Earl Charles?
Yeah.
Don't have anything to report for the Parks and Rec, but I want to thank the Parks and Rec Advisory Board jersey and Dave Penders in the back. Just want to thank you for all the work you're doing. Want to give a special thanks to the Cecil County Public Schools for the use of their buildings for, had some damage done. I just want to say thank you to them for allowing us to be able to use their facilities at this time. And Mary, thank you for all your help, so.
Thank you.
Robert?
I don't have anything to report this month, but like everyone else, I just continue to be impressed with our Public Works Department, our Parks and Rec Department, our administration. I'm really impressed with this town, and the deeper I get into this, the more impressed I am, and I really wish that everybody knew how hard this core group of people works for this town.
Okay, that's wonderful. Hey, this is the time of the meeting. We open up the floor. Mr. Giblin, come on down.
Rob?
Okay.
Mary has a favor, so if you could.
In 214 North Street.
Mayor, want to mention that the, it was Ray Jackson had a meeting scheduled for the BUD upstairs.
Yes.
Not upstairs.
What happened here?
Yes, out of service up there for a while, quite a while.
Mr. Giblin, go ahead.
I'd like to say that I'm going to try to come up with a couple of ideas for every meeting, you know, just to warn you in the next.
You're doing good. I like your ideas.
Thank you. One out of 100 is good.
Mr. Giblin, can we digest these and get back to you next week with them?
We think that five years ago, five years ago, I was at the Rock Hall Pirates and Lunches Fantasy Festival, and it was beautiful. It was wonderful. It's a wonderful town, so nice and clean. And one thing that stuck with me, I was with my niece and nephew that morning, is that they had a raffle for pirate chests full of goodies. I can't remember what they were, but I did, Michelle, with one phone call, found out who the contact was, and I sent a letter to him asking how their raffle was run and, you know, what prizes were in the pirate chest. And to the best of my memory, the raffle was held every three hours, or it might have been held after so many tickets were sold, I don't know, we'll find out. However, if, you know, we don't like exactly that, we can come up with our own pirate chest raffle. Amazon has so many different types of pirate chests and all different sizes. We only have one coffee.
Yep.
We can put different prizes in there, such as $50 off dinner at Minahan's, $50 off dinner at Central Tavern, $100 off of Mick's Crab House dinner. They're very expensive. I spent over $200 last time I was there. And so there's one thing is the pirate chest raffle, and my idea is that if it is run every three hours, that that would generate more profits than a day-long raffle. But we have to see, you know, what Rock Hall comes back with, just to take a look at it. Second one is lunch with the mayor. You know, this could be, I don't know how it's going to be run, but could benefit little baseball and high school football and soccer, and maybe we'll get the mayor fat.
There you go.
For a good cause. Okay, the next thing is dump, first of all, dump tanks, as you see in a carnival, are, you know, where the clown gets up on a board and tries to knock him into a big tank of water. Those cost $4,000 at Walmart and $200 to $300 a day to rent them. You know, that cuts deep into the profit. There are alternatives. I'll give this one because there's condoms in the background. It's a structure made of PVC pipe. I knew I made it, no, I knew I made it not a condom. And obviously this thing, and the prices change. It goes from, I don't know, $2.79 to, right now it's $2.69. And the bucket holds up to five quarts of water, tap water, and so it's clean. And I envision there'd be a piece of, not chain link fence, but chicken wire that's taped over the front of it, just in case a beanbag goes astray. And there's like 112 or something comments on Amazon you could read. I just want to read one. Let's see, that ordered in place are dank, a dump tank or squadron, and I assume that's military, which I don't know, it could be police or fire. Let's see. It arrived fast, easy to put together, and the bucket held a lot more water than you thought, five quarts, sorry. Fundraiser was a hit. After purchase, still cleared $350, you know, and I'm sure that a town is a lot larger than a squadron. And I'm thinking that the mayor may want to volunteer, the town commissioners may want to volunteer, police, official officers, and fire officers. Also, police and fire department clerks could use this thing for their own functions, their own functions. I'm sure you have functions, you know, to get together in the summer or other times, you know. Maybe the police would like to see their chief get a little wet. And it could be other people, could be.
I think we.
Coach, the county commissioner, maybe the county executive would want to stand up there. Now, what I did is I talked to Michelle about that, and she says you've got to see the Elk and Alliance. And I guess on August 13th, I went down to see Jessica Price, but she wasn't there. I talked to her associate and just said, saying, "That night we were having a meeting." Now, Bob Massifiano, you ever run that committee?
No, I used to be.
Oh, okay. But they did have a meeting that night, and I don't know what the outcome was. But I'm thinking for $269, I think it would be a very, very wise purchase to have, and could generate a lot of funds this year and future years. Rafting down to Big Elk. About two weeks ago, I walked from the dock at Marina Park up to the carousel, you know, by the last baseball field, you know, right on Howard Street there. And from the Bridge Street Bridge down, it's all mud, nothing sticks, everything flows right down there. And incidentally, it was still air, and I saw little leaves floating upstream, so it has to be tidal. So if a river did have a rafting thing, got to make sure that the water's flowing in the right direction. And what I was thinking about that is that the rubber rafts could be launched, you know, from the carousel point, and people, you know, this would attract a lot of people. It could become, it might even become somewhat of a local tourist attraction. Now, I'm thinking that there are a lot of rafting companies in North Maryland and Pennsylvania, and one of them could come down with all the. And one of them could come down with all the rafts and with the trucks to bring them back. And I'm thinking that we need lifeguards, say, every hundred yards or so, hundred fifty yards, maybe in canoes, that we can get high school students to get their lifeguard qualifications from the YMCA, and they would help give them a job during the summer, too. So it's something to think about maybe in the future.
Thank you.
Above the Bridge Street Bridge, yes, there are sandbars and there are, you know, some tree trunks stuck in them. But this all could be smoothed out, and it's all visible. The next one is Pie in the Sky. Is launch these rafts from the Delaware Avenue Bridge. However, there's from the Port Bridge down, there's a few hundred yards of wilderness. So I'm not too sure about that. The last idea is a treasure hunt. Went there at Wolf Fest or having it at another time. And I looked it up in Wikipedia, and it must be an old, an old reference, because it said, "Oh, you can look for an eight-track tape to get..." So those are my ideas for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gidlin. Ed, did you have something to say?
Yeah, the mayor has to leave a quarter of eight, so we can come up.
Yeah, I... Come on down. I didn't have you on the... Yeah, come on down.
Just to report again on Park Recreation Board, you have to met and you have a copy of the minutes. Gene, to answer your question, this is the new flyer.
Yes.
Independent flyer that will be going out. Back to the 5K. They're going to tweak a little bit of the course, but we're... Park Recreation Department's requesting additional funds. The coach down at the Bo Matt Athletic Director is going to try to make a layout of the course. And if we could have it designed, if we could put a sign out at Meadow Park at the starting line and finish line so people, when they come out there, they can view the actual layout of the course. So we're requesting some additional funds for that. Also, if any of you have any ideas as far as vendors, we thought that if we could try to generate some revenue, have a vendor out at the day of the county meet, because they run four races. They run a JV girls and boys, and then also varsity girls and boys. So it'd be four individual races that day of the event. So hoping we can get a vendor that we get a certain percentage of the tape, which can probably revert back to the Park Recreation Department. One of the emphasis of our meeting was, how can we advertise and get word out?
To the new community center.
Promote Park Recreation Department. We came up with this idea.
Right.
One, it would be, do you have ideas for new and upcoming activities for sports leagues? Are you interested in being an instructor? Are you looking for part-time work? And the contact person for the department. We're hoping we can get permission from the local Core Trumo, North Roman, to be placed in the employee's lunch area.
Special events, everything that people know exactly what the building looks like, what it's all about inside. You've got to put this out to the public, because people need to know what you're doing. Otherwise, it's just the building with a picture. You need to have all this stuff out there letting people know.
Very good.
You're presenting this to the public.
We're going to need some...
We need a little help here.
As far as advertising campaign to get the word around. And we feel it's very vital that we include the county in this program, this whole facility, although there are restrictions as far as accommodating certain groups and things like that, which we are, but we also need to generate revenue to keep this place going, so.
Staffing and everything else.
When your first question, I think is important, are you interested in becoming a certified instructor? That's good, because you're going to need a multitude of different people. But have you all also, if I asked you a question, say to me what I need to be or what criteria I have to have to be certified? Or you haven't gone that far yet?
Well, the bottom line right now, we're just trying to figure out, because of the fact that of the staffing, we cannot program, as many as a program in business recreation for so long, I cannot program a building and help anybody out if I don't know the amount of staff that you're going to have in this building.
I didn't say that.
But I'm just letting you know.
Okay. If I were to come to you and say that I want to instruct volleyball, is that a given? Or are there's criteria for me in order to be on your staff? That's all I'm asking.
We have contacts. I have potential contacts of people who coached in college.
Yes.
Who are retired, be more happy to run leagues.
Through the University of Delaware, too, yes. There's a lot of contacts that we can fill this building up. It's just the idea.
I appreciate what you're saying, but what I'm saying, the staff that you allow to come, even though you have contacts, are those people going to be permitted to do so and to keep us safe as a town development? Follow what I'm saying?
I guess, because of what's all there is.
Because everybody just can't go out there. That's what I'm saying. Follow me through. I appreciate what you're saying. Just can't go out there and instruct children.
Truly understand that. Truly understand that. Okay, for one, we're looking at insurance. If people are coming from, you call this a neighborhood community center, and people coming from everywhere, are we insured so when people walk through this door and something happens to them, are they covered? Is that... We need to have insurance.
We're insured by the local government insurance press.
Excellent.
They will insure us for liability as well as property loss and everything. We're fully covered as a government.
Perfect. Okay. Well, that's one thing that was a big thing on my mind. So people walking through that door from all over. Now, this is a neighborhood community center. Are you thinking about people come from the northeast? Are people coming from other places that are going to be walking through our doors? Or is it just going to be local elk and community?
It could be anybody. What I'm just simply saying...
Exactly.
If my child is out there participating, I'm going to be sure that I have somebody that's certified and know where they're going for it. That's all I'm saying.
Well, there you go. And that's the truth, because they have to get certified with blood pathogens, CPR, first aid. You need to have everything. When they walk through that door, you know your child's going to be safe as soon as they walk through that door.
That's what I'm asking.
I understand what you're saying.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
You're not going to put a program, you're not going to schedule a program unless you have a certified instructor.
You better believe it.
Yes. Yes.
But that'll be done up front.
Absolutely.
Okay, so what did you need from us to make that happen?
Any suggestions of people that you would know? In order for us to advertise these programs, we need to have a certified instructor place before we can advertise it. And that's been our work, along with Mary, helping Mary out with that and making suggestions. And there again, if any of you know anyone that's certified, that could teach arts classes, karate classes, things like that, give us the names, and we will pursue contacting them and see if they're interested, so. And we have both knowledge and information of people from Cecil College, University of Delaware.
All of them.
So you probably already have a good bank of instructors in the back of your mind or lined up.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
All right, so it's not just the five of us giving it to people?
No, no.
Okay.
And do you have a list of activities that you plan?
You can have a lot of activities that you plan, but if you don't have the staffing in the building...
Have you compiled the list at the meeting?
Well, that will be part of the January, February, and Aprils and going out, because that's when we're going to have to hit the ground running.
And I would think, too, on some of these activities, if there's a fee to participate in them, that fee would help us designate the help you need. If you're saying this purpose is going to generate five hundred dollars or whatever, we're able to put that towards paying
Correct.
the staff that you need, other than volunteer staff.
That's where we want to get instructors who are certified, but they also go out and recruit people in their classes.
In their classes.
The more people they recruit, the more money they're going to make, so.
Right, okay.
You know what I mean?
Is it that you need to know that we're open and flexible for this? Is that all you're looking for right now? Or something more specific?
We're looking for any suggestions that you can let us know that in order to go forward, we have to know that you're backing this up, that if we can put it out there, as you could see, putting something like this and people know, this is what we're doing, this is the... This is what we're offering.
Right.
We need to know, are you going to have ID cards? Are you going to somehow maybe spend ten dollars for a fee that people are walking into the building? That you're not people just coming out of the streets and just coming into the building? We have to make sure that people are walking in there having... Making account for their, you know...
Our idea is that we have like a karate class. Every one of participants will be given a key or a card if they check in. You just can't walk in without register and checking in. So it's not going to be an open door policy. It's going to be controlled as far as...
It has to be controlled. It has to be. You just can't have people walking out of the streets.
I love your suggestions. I think that when we, as we start moving with these programs, we're going to follow those suggestions for programming. I don't think that anyone up here is going to be bad on this.
Well, we're just trying to say that in order for us to be successful and help Mary out to program this building and be successful, we need help from everybody to understand this is going to be... You just don't open the doors and walk in. You have to make sure that you have all of your ducks in a row. And...
And I think this is the level we want to go to.
From the security to everything, from the inside, people certified, making sure if somebody drops in the gym, do you know what to do with somebody, a bloody nose? You're going to have to make sure you've got a bio bag and stuff, all this stuff. You've got to have all this stuff in mind, because you can't open yourself up to a lawsuit. You've got to make sure you have everything, you know.
Right. Absolutely.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
You've got to have security. You've got to make sure that everything is up for it. Because if you're putting this much money into something this beautiful, you've got to have to make sure it's going to run like clockwork as soon as you open those doors. And that's my job. That's his job, to make sure that we're giving you our expertise of what goes into a building to make it successful.
And what we're asking for is...
Is your help.
Not an a la carte, open checkbook, but as things go along, we're going to have to spend some money to get the word out on this.
Get the word out.
And Mary's going to need financial backing in order to do it, so we can get this going.
Yeah, personally...
If that makes sense.
Well, yeah, I don't personally, and we're not going to put the time and money into this building and not support what's needed to make it serviceable to the community, so.
Because our number one is safety, and I told you that once before, I said it. Number one is safety. As soon as you walk through those doors, you know it's all secure and safe.
Right.
That's the bottom line.
And I personally think as you, as all this comes together and you start giving us a more firm idea of what programs you want to start with, because I don't... You might want to do fifty programs, but I'm sure you're not going to start with fifty.
No, absolutely not.
But you're going to start with a basic amount that you know is going to be utilized and appreciated to start.
Yes.
And so from that, we should be able to determine the personnel that we either need to hire or get lined up as volunteers and what it's going to cost, so that we can budget for it and/or Mary can put it in that February brochure. But in the meantime, if you want input and you go out into the public in this manner, then if you could at least maybe say your input is requested, appreciated, please respond by
Correct.
November thirtieth.
The public needs to know what they want in that building.
Well, yeah, I mean, get it out there, get them to respond, but it's...
You've got a beautiful building and you've got a nice setup. You need to let people know this is what's coming. And you need to put it out, special events, you need a fall fest, all the stuff that you're doing from now to this.
That's a good idea, too.
To let people know that this is in there going, "Wow, we got this brand new rec center coming online." And, you know, and advertising it so people know what's coming. You've got the ideas and, you know, you... I'm just trying to make it a lot easier to, if you're going to promote something, let people know what the inside of the building looks like, what we doing with it. We've got a gymnasium or activity rooms. We've got this, that, that, and that.
Thank you for...
Thank you.
But thank you very much. That's all we...
Well, listen, I appreciate everything that you guys are doing and...
You want this?
I like the direction we're going.
Thank you very much, Melissa.
Thank you. Appreciate you helping to make this community center better.
It's all about success, and success comes with making sure that the public knows exactly what's happening. Otherwise, they're not coming.
I know you've got to go, but I have some thoughts on this. I'd like to talk to you about this sometime, Mary Ann. I'd like to talk to the board.
Well, you can call me, too. I know my name's Mary Ann, but please don't.
Yeah.
I'm on Jersey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Chuck, did you say you wanted to say something?
Oh, leave it there.
Perfect.
My name's Charles Blankship. Everybody calls me Chuck. One thirty-five Wesley Street here in town. Actually, I have two things, Robbie, that something was just brought to my attention. One is personal, one is for an organization that I'm with. The personal one is, I've been in here talking about the, as Gene said, easement. It is where sanitary sewer runs, but anyway, it's an alleyway. A recognized alleyway that used to run from behind Four Corners to Maryland Avenue, but when it got so wet, they ended up putting a culvert there and blocked it out. About three years ago, the town came in, dug out the topsoil, took a sanitary sewer manhole cover, took it down to the ground level and everything, brought Crush and Run in. That's the access to the back of my property. And the problem of it is that, as with any right-of-way in a town, it should remain unblocked. And the two property owners on Wesley Street that are on either side of the alley continue to park next to their houses in the alleyway. And twice now, I've tried to either get in or get out from the backside of my property with one of my trailers. They had a car parked there. We're at home. The other property owner had their truck parked there and wouldn't answer the door. So I couldn't, I couldn't use the alleyway when I needed to use the alleyway. Basically, what I'm asking is, is there any way to display that that is a public right-of-way and so that it can remain unblocked? And if it doesn't remain unblocked, then I can call EPD and ask them to do something about getting them to move the vehicles. When Mr. Duzbado rebuilt a property that had burned down, he paved half, his half of the alleyway to make... of the alleyway to make off-street parking. And that's where, that's where they parked, but it's halfway across the alleyway. When your grandma.
My mom.
Huh?
My mom.
Right. Lived there, she, they always parked in the back, behind the house, out of the alleyway. I used that for the first five or six years I was there to get, get into the back of my property. People that ended up buying it from Rosemary and Ed, right, didn't, didn't.
Who started, Mary and Ed?
Dean, Ed, what?
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. You're talking about, okay, I knew you were talking about, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Right, right. When, when, when they sold that, they sold it to a young lady, there was a bunch of problems down on the corner, she had a young son, so she ended up selling it again. And the people that are there have given Elton PD plenty of business and they don't wanna hear that that's not their parking place. And like I said, I tried to get down through there, they're parked there, they wouldn't even come to the door, you know. So if there's some way that we can mark that, that it's a public access, that, that needs to remain open, I would appreciate it. Second of all, part of the damage from the storm on Sunday, and I have plenty of pictures, Rob has seen it personally, I showed the pictures to Robbie, a lot of damage out behind my house. The last time it happened, I spent the time hauling everything out to Wesley Street. It took me four days to clean up. The damage that's out there now is probably three to four times as much as what happened in a storm about five weeks ago. Also, the culvert that was put in under Mayor Kraus's administration, one of the trees that got knocked over in the storm on Sunday has come down and completely blocked the It could cause any water that does come down through there, if we were to get another good rainstorm, could cause it to back up and not be able to go through the culvert. So talking with Dan and everything, would like Public Works to come back here, take care of that tree. The top came out of a couple of trees that are in the right-of-way. So instead of me cutting them up and dragging them out to Wesley Street, if Public Works say if they get the roof fixed, could come back there with a chipper or whatever, take care of what's come out of their trees and at the same time chew up what I could lay out there, that'd be a lot less work for me.
But you handle that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I'm asking. So those two things, if, if the town can start coming back in there just every once in a while, and, you know, I see, I see the guys on the street all the time and everything. And I've asked them to come back there and maybe when they're out spraying, spray the weeds down or, or whatever, because I don't run it every day. You know, so I'm not keeping the weeds down by running it. But it is the only way that I can get to the back of my property. So that's what I'm asking. Thank you for that. Second of all, I am three times past master of Union Lodge number forty-eight, the Masonic Lodge here in town. We have had some interest in placing signs coming into town. I know you've all seen them riding up through Pennsylvania or whatever, you see that, that there are signs displayed that show that there is a Masonic Lodge in town and when it meets and everything. They're looking to maybe place some of these signs on the entrances into town. When I say that, I'm talking two thirteen North and South, two seventy-nine, Newark to Route forty coming into town, and Route forty East and West. So it'd be a total of like six signs that we would like to place if we can, you know, advertising the fact that we're here.
I think we'd have to coordinate that through, through Lewis to make sure that we're.
Right.
How we can do that, but.
It's State Highway, regulate any signs.
What's that?
State Highway regulates signs on all those roads, they're not town roads. Okay. So they would, all three, yeah, all three of those, I would guess that would be.
Now, we do have a screen, we have a screen down at.
At the park.
At the park.
We can start there.
If you have a nice sign, we'll, we'll take a look at it and see if we can prove it and.
Yeah. We, we can get a couple made up, that's, that's no problem. And I'd, just let you know that I talked to a guy maybe twenty years ago on the same, from, from the state route about that, and apparently he didn't have a very above-board opinion of our organization. So he just said that now, we've got too many signs out there now, we're not putting any more signs up, so. But on behalf of Master of the Lodge this year, I'd like to let you know that if there's anything ever, ever that our lodge can do with any of the town functions or anything like that, that we'd love to participate in it and help out in any way we can.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Chuck.
So what lodge are you again?
Excuse me?
What lodge are you again?
Union forty-eight right here on the corner of.
Side.
Yeah.
I know that we had KCI back there doing some surveying, I think a couple of years ago on that alleyway. There should be a way that we could determine and mark it in some fashion, even if it's with kind of the same delineators that we have out here on the term. Maybe we can put some delineators so people can see that it's a, a right-of-way through there, so.
We'll be able to come up with something.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned?